Hello, my name is Deborah Panetta and I am running for reelection for Saugus Selectmen. First, I'd like to tell you about my background and experience, then about what has been accomplished since I've been in office, followed by my vision for Saugus. I live on Bellevue Street and I'm married to Mark Panetta and we have two children, Mark Jr. and Sabrina. I graduated with a bachelor's in accounting from Suffolk University and with my master's in business administration from Northeastern University. I also received my Project Management Professional, PMP certification. I have over 35 years of experience working in finance and accounting. I am currently the site manager and finance director for Victoria Realty and a business owner. Along with serving as your Saugus Selectmen for the past 12 years, currently vice chairman, past chairman. I am also the president of the Saugus River Watership Council, a member of the Saugus Business Education Collaborative, Historical Society, Women's Guild, SAVE, The Garden Club, and Conservation Law. I have also served as the chairman of the Saugus School Committee, a five-term town meeting member representing Precinct 5, vice chairman of the Saugus Charter Commission, secretary on the Cliftondale Revitalization Committee, and on the Master Plan Advisory Committee. I'm proud to say that I've been endorsed by the Sierra Club and the North Atlantic States Regional Council of Competitors Local 339. Since I originally took office, I had participated in various initiatives, including the rebuilding of our parks, playgrounds, and recreational facilities, being accepted as a designated Green Community, having a record amount of funds put into our town stabilization fund, improving roads, bridges, sidewalks, water and sewer, the completion of the rail and bike trail, public safety initiatives, including a new fire truck, a new police cruisers, completion of our town's master plan, increasing our bond rating to AA+ by standing in pause due to our very strong economy and strong budgetary performances, saving taxpayers millions of dollars. Within the next two years, we need to determine how Saugus taxpayers are going to pay for the new vocational school, move forward with the feasibility study for a West Side Fire Station, continue discussions with residents on the future of the closed schools, enhance our town's emergency communication infrastructure and public safety for residents, and continue with our strong financial performance in town. There are many uncertainties that we are currently facing. We need to protect the character and the financial stability of our town. We must make sure that we have experienced, honest, and responsible leadership whose primary concern is our citizens. I will continue to be that leader. I am honored to serve the Saugus residents and I always want to make sure that your voice is heard. I respectfully request that you cast one of your five votes on Tuesday, November 7th, for me, Deborah Panetta, and I'm number one on the ballot. I appreciate your consideration and thank you.
Hello, I'm Corinne Riley and I'm seeking reelection to the Board of Selectmen. I'm a lifelong Saugus resident and Saugus High graduate. My husband Chris and I own and live in my childhood home with our two pups. We have three adult children, Dan, Elena, and Olivia, and our proud grandparents of Jacob and Cameron. Since being elected as Selectmen in 2019, I've initiated the annual Saugus 411 event, Citizens Input Forum, and Empty School Building Forum. I've worked successfully with Representative Wong to bring funding for our first flashing crosswalk signs to Saugus, and again, to pass a law establishing the Saugus Emergency Relief Fund. I initiated the COVID-19 candlelight vigil and thank you reception for all employees and volunteers who got us through it. I served on the WIN Subcommittee and Cliftondale Revitalization Committee. In the interest of transparency and accountability, I've insisted on improved communications with the town manager, which now happens via quarterly update meetings with the board, and insisted on public evaluation of the town manager, which now occur annually. I don't just run to occupy a seat. I put in the work, cooperate with everyone, and get things done. My priorities have been public safety, communication, ensuring all voices are heard, and making Saugus a better place to live. Accordingly, my top priority for the next two years is the long overdue West Side Fire Station. Another priority is the introduction of an SMS compatible communication service so that timely updates on emergency situations, road closures, and more can get pushed to residents' smartphones in real time. Next is economic development and safety improvements in Cliftondale Square. Traffic and pedestrian issues are well-known, and while some work has been done, it's time to see some progress on the ground and in vacant storefronts. Another important issue facing us is the recent influx of hundreds of migrants to hotels along Routes 1 and 99, stressing our schools, police, fire, and health departments. We need to cooperate locally and with our state delegation to help the migrants, but also reduce the burden on town resources. Finally, the Golden Hills Playground is a safety hazard and needs a complete replacement, and I'd like to see this project fast-tracked. Aside from the Board of Selectmen, I've served on the School Committee, secured AEDs for all public schools, secured funding for the first robotics program, taught religious education, coached Little League, belonged to the Lions Club and the Veterans Council, and fought privatization of school custodians. I request respectfully your vote on November 7th.
Hello, I am Jeffrey Chicalini and I'm a candidate for reelection as Saugus Selectmen. I've been serving on the Board since March of 2015, including one term as vice chairman. I'm a lifelong resident and fourth-generation Sargonian, and I've been with my wife Julie for over 26 years. Both my daughter and son graduated from Saugus High School's academy. I am an honors graduate of Saugus High School, class of 1990. I graduated magna cum laude from Salem State University in 1994 with majors in accounting and economics. I'm a CPA and shareholder at AAF CPAs, a top 100 firm in the United States. We have over 325 employees. I've been there for almost 30 years. I have displayed consistently over the past eight and a half years how integral my business experience is to the role and responsibility of being a Selectman. I pride myself on asking the tough questions that allow us to make sure we consider the impact to our community, and we put in conditions and restrictions that protect our residents and our community. I followed in my parents' footsteps and I'm a strong believer in giving back to the community. I've coached baseball in town for over a decade. I was also the assistant Haba master for approximately six years, and I volunteer with several charities throughout the year. I've been the treasurer and chair of the Audit Finance Committee at Salem State University's Foundation since 2009. As a member of the Board of Selectmen for the past eight years, this administration has accomplished quite a bit, working collaboratively and supporting the shared vision we have with the town manager. If reelected, I promise to continue to work hard in order to continue to move our town forward. Over the next term, I would like to see the recently updated master plan come into focus. This includes additional zoning restrictions to slow the rate of new apartment developments on Route 1, a West Side Fire Station, and we need to begin the process of gathering community input to repurpose the vacant schools. As for my position on the charter change, I'll say this: I feel there are some minor changes that can be made to modernize our charter and how we do business, but I do not support Saugus becoming a city. The financial benefits are non-existent for a community of our limited size and with our demographics, and in my opinion, it changes the entire landscape and fabric of our amazing community. I do support modifications such as having staggered elections and perhaps expanding the size of our representation in town meeting. In closing, I ask that you vote for me, Jeffrey Chicalini. I'm on the ballot Tuesday, November 7th.
Hello, my name is Michael Sereno. I am a candidate for the Board of Selectmen. I am a graduate of Saugus High School and the University of Massachusetts. My public service record includes Board of Selectmen, Town Meeting Member, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, and Chairman of the Conservation Commission, along with the and Vice Chairman of the Town Meeting Charter Committee. Saugus is in good financial condition. We continue to move forward with yearly balance budgets and $20 million in our reserve accounts. Saugus continues to make investments in our schools, parks and playgrounds, roads, water and sewer systems, design work for a West Side Fire Station, and a feasibility study for Cliftondale Square. This election, residents will be asked to form a Charter Commission. The intent is to change our town to a city. This change would replace our 50 elected town meet members and five Selectmen with a nine-member City Council. Budgets that require 26 votes from Town Meeting would only need five votes from a City Council. Zoning bylaws that require 34 votes from Town Meeting would only need six votes from a City Council. With town government, more residents participate in the decision-making process. This results in greater transparency and accountability. Overdevelopment is a critical issue in Saugus. After two major developments on Route 1, I was concerned with the loss of our commercial tax base, the excessive number of apartments, the impacts on traffic, public safety, and our schools. Therefore, I offered zoning changes that would increase our commercial tax base and reduce the number of apartments. Town Meeting supported my changes 35 to 5. Some believe rezoning Cliftondale Square to allow apartment buildings would help revitalize the area. However, in two separate surveys, residents opposed apartments. We must respect our residents and protect their neighborhoods. I successfully led the opposition to the rezoning. There are other options available as proposed in the Urban Land Institute's Cliftondale Revitalization Report. In closing, I am honored to have served our town with the same professionalism and integrity that I have throughout my years of public service. I ask that you please consider me for one of your five votes for Selectmen.
Hello, fellow citizens. I would like to start you with a story. Once upon a time, a young Italian man and a Portuguese woman journeyed to Brazil, seeking dreams, and drawing from their spirit, I ventured to America in 1998, landed in Saugus years later. My name is Sandra Pansini Souza, running for Board of Selectmen, and here in Saugus, I built more than just a home. My wife and I raised our son, who now attends Saugus Belmont Steam Academy. At the age of nine, we laughed, we learned, we faced challenges, and celebrated triumphs here. And through it all, Saugus gave us more than a place to belong, but a neighbors to share stories with. And just as in any story, there are challenges to face, and as a mortgage broker company business owner based in Saugus, I've weathered economic storms and celebrated sunny days, and in the quiet moments, I've found solace and guidance in my faith while teaching Sunday Bible School at my church. So every town has its tales, but it's the people that make Saugus unique, and those who've been here for generations with the stories passed down from grandparents to grandchild, and those like me who stumbled upon Saugus and found a place to write their chapters. And then, there are the young dreamers, our future, waiting to pick up the pen. So why am I here sharing my tale? Because I believe that together, we can co-author the next chapter of Saugus's story, a chapter where tradition meets innovation, where every voice finds an echo, and where the future is a canvas waiting for our combined vision, like those of Randy, my veteran neighbor, got me invited to hear the stories of our vets. I cannot forget Stephen sharing his concerns about our widows in arms, and Vinnie, the most likable fellow I met at Herman Smith Breakfast, probably happens to be a branch of my Italian grandpa's family. We share a very close surname and only different by a letter. And Juarez, the priest who longs to keep feeding and helping more than 80 families in need in our town with food, clothing, and basic needs. And David, the nine-years-old boy attending Belmont Steam Academy, voiced his concerns while talking to his dad, saying, "Dad, what is happening to my town? Seems that everyone is leaving. Are we going to?" So as your Selectmen, I want just to be a representative. I'll be a fellow storyteller, eager to hear your tales, to weave them into our town's tapestry, and to ensure that Saugus remains the heart-barming story it's always been, and not just a place on Route 1. I urge you to support the upcoming Charter Committee initiative, which I strongly support, and let's ensure that Saugus continue as a place where every voice counts and the story matters. And to learn more, visit votepansini.com and facebook.com/SaugusUnited. I appreciate your considering me in your Selectmen, and together, we will craft a brighter
Good afternoon. I would like to thank Saugus TV for the opportunity to speak with you today. For those of you that may not know me, my name is Anthony Cogliano, the current chairman of the Board of Selectmen and a candidate for reelection. I'm running again because I love this town. No one works harder or does more for this community than I do, and I believe it shows. I was first elected to the Board of Selectmen in 1991 at the age of 25 and served for 10 years. I then took a 16-year break from politics to concentrate on my family. My wife Teresa and I raised four wonderful children, Cassandra, Gabriella, Sophia, and Anthony Jr. We are now blessed with two beautiful granddaughters, Luciana and Leila Cross, both sixth-generation Sargonians. I first ran for Selectmen to carry on the rich political heritage of my family. My grandmother Ann proudly served on the School Committee, and my grandfather Tony served for many years on the Housing Authority and Planning Board. If you look at any town building, you'll be able to see one of our names embossed on a plaque, an honor that I will cherish for the rest of my life. I take my job seriously and put the time and effort into making our town the best it can be. I've tackled the tough issues here, like recreational cannabis dispensaries, because I believe these dispensaries will bring in millions in increased revenue to this community, something we desperately need if we want to fix the parks and playgrounds throughout our town. Our children certainly deserve it. To that end, I'd like to thank my colleagues Jeff Chicalini and Corinne Riley, and all the Town Meeting Members that helped me get this across the finish line. I also spearheaded the Host Community Agreement with WIN Waste, another tough issue that brought on much criticism, criticism that extended to my family, causing me to lash out at those individuals that have no respect and just love to stir the pot. I did this because I know it'll deliver high rewards for the community should the DEP allow it, rewards that will deliver lower emissions and save us over $30 million over the next 25 years. Again, special thanks to Selectmen Chicalini and Riley, as well as the dedicated individuals on the WIN Waste Committee for helping me get this to pass. You're only as good as the people you surround yourself with, and I've been blessed to have many hard-working volunteers by my side. I am also a candidate for Charter Commission because I believe we deserve better. Early on in the process, I stated that I wanted to make Saugus a city and run for mayor. After spending three months knocking on doors and garnering over 4,300 signatures to form a Charter Commission, I listened to everything our residents had to say, and I came to the conclusion that they'd like to remain a town with an elected town manager. Presently, the manager is appointed by the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to give that power to the people and let them decide every four years if the manager deserves another term. As my critics will say, "It's all about him," and it couldn't be further from the truth. It's all about you, the 30,000 of you that make up this wonderful town. After speaking with both the Attorney General's Office and the Secretary of State, nothing in state law prohibits this from happening. I've seen the glory days of Saugus, I see how it is today, and I look forward to building a much better future for the generations to come.
Hi, my name is Vincent Sereno and I'm running for reelection to the School Committee in Saugus. I'm the fourth generation in town. I went through Saugus Schools as well as my four kids, who all graduated and had successful careers. My wife is also a teacher in town. I want to continue the work we started here with student achievement and getting all our students to the top of their potential. We are investing in our students and parents, upgrading our communication with both. Our teachers and support staff are fantastic. I'm really proud of how we support them. We're making positive changes in the district, and I would love to continue to do that. I'm asking for your vote on November 7th. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Lee Juro, and I currently serve on the School Committee. I initially ran two years ago because I saw a gap on the Board in terms of representation. I wanted to be an agent of change for my daughter, who attends the Belmonty Steam Academy. Lily is nine and in the fourth grade. My husband Chris and I moved to Saugus from Somerville in the winter of 2015. Now, you may think that not being a native Sargonian might be a disadvantage, but frankly, it's just the opposite. I've been able to take a fresh look at our schools. My daughter actually started at the vets in kindergarten. Our new curriculum, to have kids read and write by age eight, is an exciting goal that has been supported by our new program entitled "Wit and Wisdom." Having high-quality materials and foundations not only supports learning for our kids, but it shows our teachers that we are invested in high expectations for every child. I'm so impressed with our commitment to increasing our social-emotional supports for students as well. As an assistant cheer coach for Saugus Youth Football and Cheer, I'm able to talk directly with many of you. I hear your concerns about safety at the middle school-high school complex. Teacher retention, as well as ensuring our classrooms have consistent faculty, is paramount to the success of our schools. I'm proud to have sat alongside my fellow Board members who were able to work with the Teachers Union to ensure this year that they received a fair contract for their members. I'm honest. I'm reachable. I care because these issues affect my daughter too. My pink signs around town say "A Mom" for School Committee, and that's exactly the role I've tried to uphold. A mom who's ready to listen. I'm in the pickup line. I'm there for a quick chat at the after-school program at Saugus Youth and Rec. I'm at open house events. I'm there at the Belmonty. I truly am excited about the direction we're going. Let's not look back. I want us to embrace the incredible work our teachers, staff, paras, and clerks have done. Together, we can excel, collaborate, and succeed. I'd be humbled to receive one of your votes on November 7th.
Hello, my name is John Hatch. I'm the second-generation lifelong resident of Saugus, proudly graduating and attending Saugus Public Schools. I'm the son of John and Josephine. My dad's family came from Baker Hill outside of Cliftondale, and my mom's family, the Monacos, came from Seaguard Ave down near Bristol Street. I'm seeking reelection to the Saugus School Committee. I'm truly blessed also to be the husband of Wendy, also a lifelong resident. We have two amazing children, Andrew, who is a junior at the University of Lowell, and my daughter Kendall, who is a junior at Saugus High School. I'm very proud to have been elected and have served on the School Committee in the early 90s for six years, four of those years as chairman. I stepped off the Committee when my son was born to be a dad and make my focus our family. I've also served on Town Meeting for four years, so you see, I bring a lot of institutional knowledge and background to the position. I have a career I love. I have been a first responder and an emergency medical technician for the past 39 years, and I've loved every minute of it. I'm the current Executive Vice President for Action Ambulance and the New Hampshire and Maine Division Chief for our company. I have also served in various roles in the last 25 years as Vice President of Human Resources and Director of Business Development. I'm also very proud of my volunteer work for the youth organizations here in town. I served on the Executive Board for Saugus National Little League for eight years. I've coached for the C Team at Pop Warner Football for four years, and I've also taught confirmation classes for the Saugus Catholic Collaborative at Blessed Sacrament for two years. My most rewarding coaching experience has been assistant varsity coach at Saugus High School from 1997 through 2002, achieving conference titles and three state championships. I am also very proud to have been inducted to the Saugus High Sports Hall of Fame with the 1999 hockey team, class of 2018. We have several big issues with the district that I want to see to completion. I also want to continue the forward momentum of our school district with district-wide student achievement, state rankings, and more importantly, recruitment and retention of faculty, our Kids Come First programs, and our summer enrichment programs. With my experience and unique ability to bring two sides together, and as an advocate of agreeing to respectfully disagreeing on an issue, I will continue to work to change our school district and town's culture for the positive, acting as one town, not two separate departments. I care about our school district and our town. Both have given a lot to me and my family, and I love giving back. Please consider me for one of your five votes. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Joseph Dennis Ghoul. Most of you know me as Dennis. I have lived in Saugus my entire life, attended Saugus Schools, so did my wife, son, and now my granddaughter. My granddaughter, who is in the eighth grade, keeps me informed on what is going on in the middle school and high school, and is my inspiration to run for reelection for Saugus School Committee. During my time on the School Committee, we have faced many challenges, including 2019 DESI report and being in the bottom 10% of the state. In 2018 and 19, the middle school and high school respectively moved into state classification of requiring assistance or intervention in need of focused targeted support. Since then, both schools navigated through the pandemic, learning loss, moving to a new complex, combining two buildings into a shared place, while managing to get out of the classification in 2022, and classified as not requiring assistance or intervention with moderate progress forward toward targets. While moving out of this classification is positive news, and we are trending in the right direction, more work needs to be done. The district has worked with the state to integrate a new curriculum for both ELA and math using high-quality instructional materials and a curriculum aligned to the state's standards. This has provided our hard-working teachers and support staff with professional development and aligned instructional materials to help provide our students with access to learning grade-appropriate and standard-aligned content. I am running again because I care about all of the students' education, whether they are struggling or excelling in academics, need special services, or want to participate in after-school programs. Education is continually changing, and we must keep up with the new technology, curriculums, and tools, and we must support the changes from a funding, policies, procedure, and process standpoint to assure every student has the opportunity to excel, get the education they deserve, and to assist our excellent core of Saugus teachers we are fortunate to have in this district. I respectfully request you cast one of your votes for School Committee for Joseph Dennis Ghoul, position four on ballot for School Committee. Thank you, Dennis Ghoul.
My name is Stephanie Mastercola, and I have been a resident of Saugus for almost 18 years. My hometown is West Roxbury, Mass. We chose Saugus for the community feel that it gave us. I am married to Tony and we have a wonderful son, Joseph, who is 14. Joseph attended the Saugus Public School System from kindergarten until the eighth grade. Joseph now attends the Northeast Vocational School and hopes to become an electrician. I am a full-time nurse at Mass. General Brigham. I have been employed there for almost 24 years. I held positions in the cardiac ICU, oncology floor, and the emergency room. I currently work in a procedural recovery unit. I also work part-time as a grassroots consultant for WIN Waste Innovations in Saugus. I have been there for approximately five years. I served as the president of the Waybright PTO for five years. I was also the fundraising coordinator for my son's hockey team, the Saugus Lynnfield Stars, for over five years. Both of these positions were elected positions. Community has always been important to me. I've been involved in the Saugus community for years. I organized the Fall For All at Town Hall some years ago, which I hope to bring back next year. COVID unfortunately ended that. I helped organize the Unsung Hero Event with the Police and Fire when COVID put that on a pause as well. I was a Saugus Lions member, but unfortunately, they met in the daytime, so I wasn't able to commit to those meetings because of work. I currently serve on the Saugus Business Education Collaborative. I am involved with the Healthy Students, Healthy Saugus Organization, running food drives to give to healthy students, healthy Saugus. My son has played in Little League, Saugus Youth Soccer, and Hockey. I was also a part of running fundraisers for those teams. I took part in forming a local parent group which worked tirelessly in favor of the new school being built and a better education for Saugus. I remember attending my first Saugus School Committee meeting and standing up to speak when Joey was only six years old. I knew back then my passion for Saugus was only going to get bigger. I can promise the community that my heart is in this for the right reasons. My priority is your children and still mine, also helping these teachers feel supported. There is a lot of work to do, but I feel confident that I can help. In life, we judge before we even know the whole picture. If I said I wasn't guilty of it myself, I would only be a hypocrite. I am 47 years old and have felt at this point in my life I have enough experience with learning how to deal with I have enough experience with learning how to deal with situations in a respectful and kind manner. People don't always have to agree on everything, but let's have a conversation and come to a better understanding of why it is you feel that way. Listening is more than half the battle. If we don't listen, then what are we really going to accomplish? A good leader isn't telling people what they want to hear, it's telling them what they need to hear. My father always tells me to work from the heart and do the right thing. I will do my best to advocate for the children and the staff of the Saugus Public Schools. We can do this together. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan Fisher. I'm a lifelong Saugus resident, running for my third term on the school committee. My wife Danielle and I have a seven-year-old daughter, Ella, and three cats. It's a lot of cats. I first ran for school committee when the district was under fire and I thought I could help restore trust and calm. I delivered on that promise. Now that everyone understands what school committees can do and can't do, we focus on superintendent, budget, and policy. And campaign promises can be all over the place. It's about track record and character. The last four years have proven that the next school committee won't know what challenges it will face. Look at the pandemic. No one asked me about plagues when I ran the first time. The skill set I bring to the job, I'm calm, I don't rattle easily. I take the time, I do the work, I build consensus. I'm not a showboat trying to be popular. I just make the best decisions I can, I stand by them, and I'm open to changing my mind if something's not working. The biggest roadblocks to progress are politics and drama, friendships and rivalries. I'm going to do what I think is right for Saugus and for the kids. I'm not trying to satisfy anyone else. If that loses me in an election, that's okay. I'm going to do this for the right reasons. I'm proud of the progress that we've made in the district over the last four years. We funded all-day kindergarten, overseeing consolidations of school buildings, funded expanded access to busing and improved curriculum, and protected the after-school programs. Teachers and paras and support staff have incredibly challenging jobs, and they're only getting harder. I'm proud to have negotiated two contracts with each bargaining unit to help retain and value qualified educators and those who keep our schools running every day. We still have a long way to go. I'm concerned about safety, about discipline, and with my own daughter planning to attend the middle school, high school complex, I want to see high achievement and challenging standards. We're getting there. We've made so many investments, put so much in place, but the last ingredient is time. We need to protect the progress we've made, let these changes produce results, but not be afraid to make adjustments. Everything has to be on the table. I was vocal in my announcement two years ago and I'm equally vocal today. The public officials speak for the town, their words have meaning, and everyone, especially our students, are listening. It's far more challenging to be a kid today, and we owe it to every student to have their backs. I'll continue to keep that promise, and I would appreciate one of your five votes on November 7th to keep doing the work. Thank you.